All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March 21st, 2022 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Glenn Conklin? Scott Dyke?
Here.
John Richet?
Here.
Darrell Jefferson?
Here.
Claudia Gazal?
Here.
Tina Oberlin?
President.
Mark Sepiti?
Here.
Nate Albert?
Here.
And Joe Kuhel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, our city administrator, Jim Marino, was not here today. He's a little under the weather, so he is excused for this evening's meeting. We do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will go ahead with the agenda items as they are presented. And the first one is for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on March 7th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the city council meetings held on March 7th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Joe Kuhel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, you also have for you the minutes of the Crest Hill work session that was held on March 14th, 2022. Motion would be in order for an approval.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the work session minutes, which meeting was held on March 14th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items tonight. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions of our city attorney? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, I will handle both of his agenda items as presented. And the first one is a resolution approving a separation agreement buy-in between the city of Crest Hill and Renee Herbst. As council recalls, this conversation was held last week in executive session at our work session. You have before you a copy of the resolution. I'd be asking for a motion.
Some move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, for a resolution approving a separation agreement and release of all claims buy-in between the city of Crest Hill and Renee Herbst. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1147.
Okay, you also have in your packet informations in regards to a resolution designating Lisa Banavitz, our finance director, as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent for the city of Crest Hill. Motion would be in order.
Some move just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the IMRF Authorized Agent Appointment of Lisa Banavitz. Questions or comments?
Glenn, I presume that she's good with this?
I would presume.
Well, she's not here to ask, so...
I can say that I received the email from her asking that I draft the resolution, so I would take that to mean that she concurs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yeah.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1148.
Okay, hopefully Jim is back tomorrow and is feeling better, so we will move on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item in front of you this evening. Last week, Lane Western, we called them out when well 12 did not stop failing electrically. After diagnosis, I determined the well, which has been in service since late 2014, has gone past its useful life. At this point, the well motor will need to be pulled, replaced, and then reinstalled with a new motor and pump. I am asking council to waive bids and award the contract to Lane Western for not to exceed amount of $42,424 to pull, order new, and replace a well pump and motor, along with all the pipe going down the hole.
Some move just presented.
Second.
All right, we have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, for a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Lane Christensen Company for the emergency pump removal inspection of Crest Hill well pump number 12. Again, this was discussed last week at our work session. Also, questions or comments?
Yes, I'm just clarifying. It says after diagnosis, it was determined that the well had gone bad. You meant the well pump?
The pump, no, the motor's actually bad.
Yeah, not the well itself, but...
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
The well is still producing water.
Yeah.
The well's still producing water, it's just the actual motor that moves the pump will come bad.
You know, at one time, we let the public works director have up to $20,000 emergency cut. Didn't have to ask nobody, gave them the authority to spend that money on a well. So if something goes wrong, I don't, we never changed that yet. So, you know, emergency, we had right to spend $20,000 for our approval.
Yep.
So you might keep that in mind, Doug.
Yeah, unfortunately...
Yeah, this is twice that much.
Right, and that's unfortunate now in today's economy, this is about as low as you're going to get for a well replacement, so unfortunately, just to pull the well is probably 25.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be anybody here arguing about it anyway. You need the well, you need the well, you know.
Correct. Thank you.
Well, you also need the waiver for the waiving of bids.
And the waiver of the competitive bidding is built into the resolution, so it just needs to be by a two-thirds.
So he needed it regardless.
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 1149.
That is the only agenda item I have for you this evening, but I would like to announce on May 14th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the city of Crest Hill Public Works will be hosting a touch of truck in our open house for our new building. We were hoping to have this a couple of years ago, but with COVID, we didn't want to have people in the building, so we're having a touch of truck from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain or shine. We'll have some heavy equipment, service vehicles, games, some demonstrations, food, fun prizes. I will, I do have handouts for council for the flyer. It's going on Facebook tomorrow as an event. And it will, we will have quiet hours from 10:00 to 11:00 for those who do need quiet hours for the event, so...
Okay, any questions of Public Works?
How we're funding this?
It's all internal.
Internal?
Yeah.
Mark, we have a gate by road near Oakland. I went by yesterday afternoon, I don't know, 1:00, something like that. The gate is still open. Do we leave that gate open during the day?
From, until 3:30. That's where the guys are working out of.
There were no cars around there at all.
They're probably, they may have been in the back or in the garage as well.
Down Oakland, there's nothing there.
All right. I'll talk to those guys, but usually during the day, if they're running just to back and forth to Public Works, they will leave it open, but it's closed at 3:30.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Did you say May 14th?
May 14th, yes. And I have flyers for everyone to hand out.
Okay, any other questions of Public Works? All right, thanks, Mark. City engineer, we have no agenda items this evening. Ron will be here tomorrow if you have any questions. Community development, our interim community development director, Steve Golden. Good evening, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, Mayor and Council. We have three items before you this evening. First item is a request for landscaping, to accept a landscaping proposal from Hawthorne Landscaping. They were the only received proposal. Last year, we had Rapid Landscaping, and for the last couple of years, we used Rapid Landscaping in a local company. However, they did not submit a proposal this year. Hawthorne is another local company, and we did use Hawthorne for several years in the past, and we've had no issues with them. Matter of fact, our staff said Rapid and Hawthorne both did an excellent job. So before you is accepting a proposal from Hawthorne Landscaping. You can see the pricing below regarding different types of lengths of grass, 90, 130, or 170.
And the bulk of this is cast onto the, is this for the homeowner ones?
Yeah, these are for the ones for foreclosed homes or for nuisances that we can't get corrected immediately. We do go after them, either through sending a bill, we send it to the bank on a foreclosed home, whatever the situation is.
Is this a one-year contract?
It's a one-year contract.
Does that, does it have to be only one year?
It doesn't have to be, but we don't, it's just the way it's been done. We can certainly try to negotiate longer term, absolutely.
I mean, it would seem like a lot less to have to go through every year.
Right.
If you get a longer...
What I would suggest, just because we have to come back and read amend this contract, what I would suggest is next year, when we do it, let's look at one in a three-year bid.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we've had, we've had both Rapid and Hawthorne for several years here, so... Motion would be in order for an approval.
Some move just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the vegetation proposal to Hawthorne Landscaping of Crest Hill for one year of service. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The second item, as discussed in the workshop last week, is a ordinance approving our 2000, adopting our 2000, the 2015 building code. Just one or two small changes, not really changes, but just kind of an update for the council. There is a link online, so any type of resident and/or contractor can jump online and go right to the link. And we will also have a copy available at the building department. The book is about that thick, though, so we will let them come in and sit them down in one of the rooms, and they can look at it if they choose. Typically, what we do is, if there's a question on a specific item, we'll make copies of those three or four pages and hand it to the homeowner or resident or contractor if they had just a specific question on a code or whatever regarding building. But before you is the, consider the passage of the 2015 building code adoption.
Some move, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Richet, for an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 15-04 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Crest Hill, Illinois. This was discussed last week, March 14th, at our work session also. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
I have a question. This is still, this still puts us like two versions behind what the current state law is.
It does, and again, our goal is to get the 2021 passed before you, or at least before you for consideration. Within the next six months, we want to really go through the, because there's been a lot of changes from the 15 code to the 22 code, whereas from the last code that we've had to now, there's not quite that many changes. So we want to go through those changes from the 15 to the 22 and look at exceptions that we don't like. For example, we talked about last, you know, last meeting at the workshop is, in some of these codes, they have sprinklers for entire new houses, which is prohibitive from an economic development perspective. So, so things like that, we want to go through all the different codes and make sure we have the exceptions posted, listed, and so you're aware of the different exceptions.
Thank you.
I just, personally, I want to be cognizant that we're not going to drop the ball on this. I mean, you know, this is probably something that should have been addressed a long time ago to be on 2015, so six months, I'm going to be waiting for it. Thank you, though.
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1898.
And the last item before you is a zoning map update or amendments. Typically, we do this every year, so this is the 2022 zoning map amendments. I have Nora Rigoni here. She will give a brief update on several changes or amendments that we are requesting or asking for in the new 2022 zoning map. Nora?
Thank you. In accordance with state statute, that a municipality is to adopt the official zoning map by March 31st of every calendar year. And this adoption reflects those map amendments that have occurred from January 1st to December 31st. And that's what you have before you today, are the reflections. We've had six ordinances that were passed in the calendar year of 2021, which resulted in maps amendments, and those are special uses, which are reflected by a star on our map, as well as then some rezonings that were simply just a change from the zoning classifications that were previously approved by ordinance. This does not reflect anything that has occurred within the last couple of months. Those would be run reflected on the next one. Now, those are a little small. I've already talked about getting larger prints once we have the official adopted date out there. If there's any specific questions that you have regarding any of the rezonings, these are all the ordinances that have been before us.
Any questions? Motion will be in order.
Some move just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the 2022 zoning map changes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Richet?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1150.
That's all I have. I do have just a quick update on a couple of things. So what we're going to do at the community development department is we're going to email the council every week on different businesses that are planning an opening. So today was your first round since the beginning of the year for, I think it was like nine or 10 businesses that have opened, which is very good for Crest Hill. And then, we're trying to coordinate grand openings with these businesses, so we have a procedure, we're trying to put a procedure in place so that we can really recognize certain businesses when they open and get good publicity and let the residents and the development community know that we're active and we are adding businesses to the city of Crest Hill.
And are you coordinating with the president of the chamber on that?
That's on my list of contacts to see if they're willing to help out, absolutely.
Well, I know, I'm sure he will.
Okay, perfect.
Steve, any update on the goofy Gs? I see some movement over there with the house coming down and...
Yeah, so, so yes, a demo permit was issued, so that's, the house is coming down. They did receive their building permit, so they are ready to go to start building. Now, I have not heard anything, you know, whether they plan on pouring concrete or anything, but they do have their permit and they are good to go.
Yeah, they were digging today.
They're digging.
Yeah.
I said I may wait home for more.
So they're, yeah, so hopefully within the next six months, we have a grand opening there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor.
Sure.
Didn't have an item on the agenda this evening, but wanted to introduce you to our new police officer, Ryan Gores. Ryan was sworn in this morning, and he begins his duties as Crest Hill police officer. He's a local gentleman from this area, had his family here and got to meet his family. It was a very nice time, but rubber meets the road here in a week when he leaves for the academy, so he'll be our 31st officer, replacing a retired officer that we had last year, so... With that, I'll introduce you to Ryan.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm excited to be here. Excited to be working for the city of Crest Hill. I'm very eager to get started. I'm looking forward to it and won't disappoint.
Thank you.
Good.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks so much, thank you.
Welcome to the city.
It was great to meet your family this morning, so we want to congratulate you on your new assignments. So like I told you this morning, you're representing the city of Crest Hill on every call you go on, so do it with class and with dignity. We wish you nothing but good health and a long future with the city of Crest Hill, so congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thanks, Ryan.
The only, just to update city council, I know we've talked to a few of you individually, from Monday's incident, I'm not going to comment much on it other than to say the officer is improving. He's doing much better. Very encouraging by the progress that's been made, so we thank everybody for their kind words and prayers for him, so everything's going well so far. We're just very happy, for me as a police chief, to see the condition that the officer's in right now, so very good thing. So thank you again for all your support.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, any questions of the police chief? Okay, thanks, Ed. Moving on to the mayor's report. I do not have any agenda items, just one comment, and I certainly want to piggyback on what Police Chief Ed Clark had commented on, that that was a very harrowing experience for our police officers last Monday night. I will tell everyone that the assisting departments from the surrounding communities were unbelievable. I certainly want to let everyone know that I did reach out to every one of the mayors from Joliet, from Lockport, from Romeoville, from Rockdale, from Shorewood, from Shanahan, from Naperville, from Plainfield. I spoke with each one of the mayors from those communities, letting them know my gratitude for their help and assistance on a very difficult situation. Also reached out to the Will County Sheriff's Department, Grundy County Sheriff's Department, and the Illinois State Police. Also to the Lockport Fire Department with Fire Chief Connor, for all of his assistance that the men of the Lockport Township Fire Department gave to us on that evening. Certainly want to extend our gratitude to them also. So my final comment would be that I am going to ask for every resident in the city of Crest Hill to certainly keep in your prayers for a quick recovery for our injured police officer. It's a very dangerous job that the police officers do today, so keep him in your prayers for a very quick recovery and a return to work. With that, I again extend my gratitude to every one of the departments that assisted us. Everyone handled themselves in a very professional manner, including the officers of the Crest Hill Police Department handled themselves in a very professional manner during a very difficult time. With that, I would entertain any questions the city council may have of the mayor.
I have a question, Mayor. Well, it's not more than a question, I don't know if it's a comment, but since the city administrator is not here today and you're the mayor, so I would like once again to ask tonight if we can have a meeting in regard the complete agenda for staffing, for any new goals, and for the new city administrator, what his plan is. I requested that several minutes ago. I have not granted that wish. I see that we are in the process of hiring many staff without the council approval. I will not vote on any of these hiring until we have a meeting. I would like to see the whole plan from city administrator up to all the way to the bottom. So I'm asking that formally tonight, since I've asked for it and it was not granted to me. But if you want me to vote, I would like to be informed, since you're the mayor, if you can relay that message. On one of the notes here, I see we're going to hire a human resource. We just eliminated that position, and we're going to hire this position, and we're contacting Gov HR without the city council approval, and we don't even know what the cost on that. So if somebody can give me those answers, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I will pass that along to him tomorrow. Hopefully, he will be back tomorrow. If you have time, maybe you can stop in also and have a conversation with them also, and I know that he'd be more than glad to fill you in.
For the record, I second what she just said.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll go along with it. I agree with what she said.
I concur.
I agree with that as well. I'd like to have a little more information.
Okay, any other questions?
No, but I'll agree with what everybody else is saying, to have a clear plan of where we're going.
Okay.
All right. Can I just throw something in there, just at that vision session that we're going to have on April 4th? A lot of that will be discussed there too, in that vision session, so just, I'm just throwing my two cents in there, however you want to deal with Jim on that, but that's something that we can certainly add as a, as a clear vision, which, what's the vision, collective vision between the council and administrator?
I understand your...
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I understand your point, but then we should not hire nobody until that vision then.
And it's hard...
It's only fair.
Sorry.
You know, it's okay.
It's hard to have a collective vision meeting with public being there when we don't know, I don't think it's fair to us that we're not privy to this prior to that. Once again, we're going to be thrown out there without any knowledge of what, at least some of us, without any knowledge, there may be some of us up here who have knowledge, some of us, without any knowledge. There may be some of us up here who have knowledge, but I am not one of them. And that's not right. You know, we are elected to represent this city. We're elected to make decisions and set policy, and that's very difficult to do when your hands are tied and you don't know what's going on. So, I agree with everything she said, and I will support that. And I will not vote for anything either until we have a group discussion, and I do mean group, as a collective council, not individually.
Okay, moving on. City Clerk's reporter, City Clerk Christine Verche Hall.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. Our first citywide garage sale for 2022 will be held May 19th through May 22nd. The fee for the garage sale permit is $5 and can be purchased through the city clerk's office. The deadline to submit your application or pick up your permit to have your address put on a list will be May 17th. If you have any questions, please contact the clerk's office at 815-741-5100, and that's all I have to report.
Any questions of city clerk?
When I get a post that on the website and Facebook?
We'll get that off to the departments tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Chris. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? Well, I missed. I missed our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening Glenn.
I missed you too Ray.
Stand up, we can see you.
All right kids, so I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from February 28th, 2022 through March 13th of 2022 in the amount of $225,279.17.
So moved.
I seek a motion for approval on our list of bills, which in that same period totaled
That's second.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Sapiti for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gasol?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And John Vichay?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all. Take any questions if you have them. Questions of city treasurer?
Thank you and good night.
Okay, thanks Glenn. All right, now onto unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? We do have a plan commission recommendation. You have before you case SU-22-1-2-1, the request of Jim Cervantes for the property at 1716 Tommich Court for a special, for change in zoning from M1 to M1 special use. So, with that, I will ask our planner, Maura Rigoni, to give us some information, background information in regards to this request.
Thank you Mayor. James Cervantes, he first appeared before council back in January 10th of 2022, looking to propose a special use for automobile and vehicle sales in, on Tommich Court, 1716 Tommich Court Unit B. This is zone M1. All auto sales or any vehicle sales in the city of Crest Hill require a special use. This is a little unique as it's internet-based. So, in speaking to the applicant, that everything will be done in, interior to the building, that it would be, anyone interested in a vehicle would see it online, contact the applicant, and then everything would be done by appointment. This was a point of discussion as if you've been out to Tommich Court, there's not a lot of parking for the patrons as well as then for vehicles to be stored there. So, that centered a lot of the discussion that we had at the plan commission meeting. That was appeared both February 9th and then was also continuing to March 9th. A lot of discussion, the plan commission did outline conditions to ensure. Those were identifying as a customer parking only, operations must be conducted within the building, no outdoor display of vehicles or any product or material for sale, no outdoor storage of vehicles, products, or materials, no display of any temporary signs and so forth, that which we would see at a traditional auto, auto lot. And then hours of operation was discussion at the plan commission at that time and working with the applicant. Hours of operation limited to 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. A lot of that centered around with the discussion of test drives and so forth and that. So, with this, we are looking for a special use for automobile and vehicle sales. As the applicant has indicated, that there may be some automobiles, there may be some vehicles, some trucks, as well as on potential of the occasional semi, as well as on other recreational vehicles. But again, all of that would be required based on the conditions outlined and proposed by the plan commission to be all within the building and nothing outside the building as well. So, there is an ordinance before you this evening. All of the conditions that were just discussed are outlined as attached to Section 3 of this ordinance.
Okay, are there any questions to Maura?
I have one.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay.
Say if somebody wants to buy a vehicle, the only time they can get down on a Sunday, can he go down there and take care of the business on a Sunday for the people?
No, my understanding is in that the applicant can speak more to it, that there are, outside of our rules that we've placed here, is that there's specific rules that he must adhere to and comply with the state, such as no vehicle sales on Sunday. So, there are certain regulations by having this type of operation compared to like a conventional sales lot that he must adhere and comply with. The trigger is, is that, and I've learned a lot about auto sales in the state of Illinois, that anything that triggers, once you sell five vehicles, you must have a dealer's license. And so, to go to an auction and buy more than five vehicles in a calendar year, you need to have such license which triggers the state to look for compliance here, which then says that we have the special use in line. So, there are, outside of the regulations that we've placed here, there are still state regulations, like no sales of vehicle on Sunday.
If the car's paid for and everything, he can't give it to them that day?
That, I would have the applicant speak to it, but the hours of operation are Monday through Friday and Saturday, so he has not indicated any hours of operation on Sunday.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever. Yeah, I know you can't sell a car on Sunday anyway. It's been a while.
Yes, it has been.
Maura, was there any stipulation on how many vehicles, like up to?
Up to, no there was not, only because we felt that it was indoors and that there was nothing that he, that could, that was the restricting factor. Mr. Cervantes would be able to speak more to that. He was restricting that possibly, what was it, like five, about five, only because since they are indoors, that there's also state requirements to be able to move around the, move around the vehicles as well while in there. He was noting at the public hearing that there's strict inspections that will be done through the state that restrict that as well.
So, five is about all you could comfortably fit?
Yeah.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. Ask the questions tomorrow, right now.
So, five, is the limit inside, is about five cars?
Five was what was limited inside. There was discussion, I believe, at the plan commission about do we restrict that number, but being inside and knowing that, that's why we were very pointed on saying nothing outside. So, depending on the size of the vehicles that he had, you know, if there was that, you know, occasional semi that might take up, that it may not be, be that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Maura, I just wanted to say thank you and to the, the plan commissioners for coming up with these, these list of stipulations. I know that when we met as a council, we would want to have some of those, so it's in place. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Maura? Okay, thanks Maura.
Thank you.
Jim Cervantes to the podium, please. Anything, maybe you can answer the two questions that were out there. First Jim, and then anything else you'd like to add in regards to this request.
As far as Sunday, it, it still is a law. You can't do it. And I believe part of that rule is even delivery of a vehicle. You can't do it. Besides that, I got a wife and young kids. I don't even want to do it, so I'm perfectly happy with that. And that's why it's also gonna be by appointment only. There, there may be days or weeks that go by where nobody comes, you know, and so it works better for me by making appointment only than it has to work for the buyers and me, you know, so it comes together. And I wanted to limit it, you know, like nine to five on, on Saturday, so it isn't, you know, if somebody can't come until six o'clock, sorry, gotta abide by the rules, you know, make another time. As far as the, the amount, it depends on, at the time. We are limited to, and what the state requires is that they, it has to also, besides the storage of the vehicle inside, it has to act like a showroom also. So, there has to be room for the people that make the appointment to come in, walk around, check the car, you know, look all around it and stuff, so you can't jam pack everything in there and have no walking or movement of it. But, like I said, maybe one day go to an auction and there's a great deal on a semi, the, the, just a tractor, that could limit, that'll take up two spots. So, until that vehicle is brought in and sold, that might limit it down to three vehicles inside the shop, you know, or say I pick up three motorcycles, that, that takes up one parking spot, you know. So, there's not an exact number on it, but we are limited to what we could have inside.
Or you could get six clown cars.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be great if they came with the clowns too.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add to this conversation?
No, pretty much everything's covered.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Jim?
You will be able to fit a semi inside?
Just, just the cab.
Just the cab, not the trailer.
Yeah, just the trucking. And that, it's gonna have to be a real good deal for something like that. I've already, I've already went down that path and been burned with semi, so it's, it's just an option, you know. If something fantastic comes along that I think I can make a great dollar on, then it's possible, but chances are slim.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for Jim?
And just, and just for the record, there wasn't any residents at either of the two meetings to speak for or against this. Is that correct Maura?
Jim, stay there. Stay there for a minute.
That is correct. There were no residents who did appear. I did have two phone calls. One was from the Forest Preserve, because they're adjacent to not this particular property, but the development in general, and had some questions due to, due to some things that were happening there, so we had them in contact. We did have one call from a resident. I explained the process and is noting that they were all indoors and the restriction would be that. They said that they did not have any concerns.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, I have six questions for you.
No problem.
Okay, and just because we are, the meeting is being taped, we're live on television, I think that everybody here wants to certainly secure the, the integrity of the neighborhood, so I'm gonna ask you six questions, okay?
Right.
Do you agree with the stipulation of onsite customers by appointment only?
Yes, sir.
Number two, do you agree with the stipulation of operations must be conducted within the building?
Yes, sir.
Number three, do you agree with the stipulation, no outdoor display of vehicles or any product material for sale?
Yes, sir.
Number four, do you agree with no outdoor storage of vehicles, products, or material?
Yes, sir.
Number five, do you agree with the stipulation, no display of temporary signs used to advertise the sale of vehicles or products sold on the premises?
Yes, sir.
And number six, do you agree with the hours of operation limited to 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday and 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the record, the applicant has agreed with all six stipulations in regards to the request. Thank you Jim.
Thank you.
All right. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against the request of Mr. Jim Cervantes for the property located at 1716 Tommich Court, for a, type of request is a special use in an M1 zoning. So, you're looking for a zoning change from M1 to M1 special use for the use, or for the ability to sell internet automobile sales. Need to come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. For the record, second time, anyone would like to speak for or against case SU-22-1-2-1, the request of Jim Cervantes of 1716 Tommich Court for a zoning change of M1 to M1 special use for internet automobile sales. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. And for the third time for the record, if anyone would like to speak for or against case SU-22-1-2-1, the applicant Jim Cervantes, the address 1716 Tommich Court. The request is a zoning change from M1 to M1 special use for the automobile sales of internet, through the internet. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to speak for or against the request. Therefore, to the city council, all questions have been answered. You have before you an ordinance granting a special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of James Cervantes, the Tommich Court special use.
So moved, just presented Mayor. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call please.
Claudia Gasol?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Vichay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1899.
Okay, congratulations Jim. Good luck. Hope you're very successful in, in what you're planning to do there. And again, thanks for your cooperation with the stipulations also. So, welcome to the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else under new business? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee liaison reports. Anyone? Next is city council comments. These are positive city council comments. Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 4, the same name Alderman Kubal.
Nothing to add at this time Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Yes Mayor, excited to announce that the Crest Hill Alliance Club Free Community Easter Egg Hunt is returning this year. This year it'll be held on Saturday, April 16th at 12 o'clock noon sharp at Richland School. We usually host it on the west side of the, of the school in the open field there. It may be relocated if CalMed is still working in that area, or NICOR is working in that area, so we'll play that by ear. But it's on Saturday, April 16th at noon. We, because there was a couple of years that was missed, we upped the ages from, it used to be newborn to eight years old, now it's newborn to 10 years old. So, if you come on out, free candy, balloons, and a visit from the Easter Bunny. Thank you.
Okay. Ward 3, Alderman Sapiti?
Just want to welcome Jim to the city. I want to wish you much luck in your, in your new business.
Alder Person Overland?
I, I, I second that as well. And welcome to our new officer Ryan. And best wishes and prayers to our other officer. Thanks.
Ward 2, Alder Woman Gasol?
Welcome Ryan. We look forward to working with you and seeing you patrolling the city. Wishing you the best of luck. And prayers to our officer. Continue to pray for all the police officers, because today's world is very dangerous. So, keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Alderman Jefferson?
I'd like to just say congratulations on, for Jim with the business. And welcome Ryan to the Crest Hill Police Department. Take my hat off to all officers that serve this city and, you know, pray for their protection and well-being. And that's it.
Ward 1, Alderman Verche?
Congratulations to the officer and congratulations on Jim, new business in the city. Thank you.
Alderman Dyke?
I just want to concur with what everyone said. Welcome, congratulations and, thank you.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. I think the O U were on the agenda for speaking?
My name is Theodore Bellows. I've been a resident for like 30 some years at the city of Crest Hill. I'm very proud to be a citizen here. My son did his Eagle project here at the Crest Hill Library. And this is a question of human equation and lack of communication. It's already a done deal. I have my date in court at the city of Joliet. The kind of fib, they told me that it was here because since it wasn't a moving violation. Well, it wasn't true. So, now I gotta waste a court system for something so minute. And all, I did my homework. It was, I got a ticket and I'm usually compliant, 99.9. I watched the news. The snow was an inch and a half to two inches in the Chicagoland area. So, I felt pretty safe, you know. Got two tickets and I was a scout master. I always taught my boys, if you were wrong, you gotta man up to it. But if you're right, you better stick to your guns, nobody else will. So, I called the National Weather Bureau. It's in, for our region, it's in Romeoville. And I forgot the names of the gentlemen over there in my books. I said, how much snow did Crest Hill receive? If I'm wrong, I'm willing to pay the fine. He says, well, we got a problem. We don't know. Ah, well, okay, you don't know? He says, all the other cities have a weather watcher except Crest Hill. If you want to become one, you get it online, you're certified, and you call it in and they will know. Joliet has one, all the surrounding areas. So, wow, well, I got a ticket. He said, well, you know, do your homework and maybe you can resolve it. So, I, I went to the powers of command. I talked to the sergeant, forgot his name. He says, I really don't want to take the ticket off because it's unfair to the officer that wrote it. I was leaving that next day for a seminar in Arizona. I said, I'll keep my phone on. Well, the officer, I think it was Officer Brown, didn't contact me for like a week. So, I came back after the seminar and went to the city hall and talked to him. And he says, well, I says, since we don't have a weather watcher and, and the weather bureau really didn't know how much snow we got, you know, can you give me a warning or whatever? He goes, well, I put my ruler on the ground. I said, but you can't do that, you know. He said, well, I did it. And well, we got two inches. Well, again, I got my thing over there. My wife told me not to bring it, but, you know, you can't do it on the ground, you know. You have to have a weather board. And I, let me just get this here. I gotta bring all this to the state's attorney. Oh crap, I'm embarrassed that you can show up there. There's more problems in the world than this, but it's a matter of principle. This is what, here I have to have this back, that you have to measure the snow every single hour. And you have to have a weather board. You have to have two of them. It has to be in white. And you really shouldn't have a ruler. You could, but they prefer a specialized stick for it. It's an instrument that they make special for that. It's already done deal, but I just wanted to make it, you know, known that you don't have a weather watcher. I talked to Mark and he said, he went out there and he has a weather board. And it was two inches, but he didn't call it in. You have to call it in to make it more official, you know. Do you really have to? Probably not. But it's gonna come a case like mine. Again, if I was wrong, if we had four inches, I'm willing to pay. But, you know, don't, you know. But I'll, I have my day in court now. It's, I go May 5th and again, probably have a jury, try one. It's really silly, but all the officer had to do is say, you know, since we don't have a weather watcher, official one, I'll give you a warning, don't do it again. But we wouldn't do nothing about it. But, you know, so that's just my case, you know, but.
Okay, well, thank you for, thank you for your comments. It sounds like, you know, you've got everything in line.
Yeah, I did my homework. And, you know, and I even want to be a weather watcher. So, I talked to Brian, he's the head guy up at the bureau, and he's gonna go online, take a little test, and, you know, so I might be one for the city of Chris.
So, all, all I will say to you is you'll have your day in court, and if the judge rules in your favor, we will certainly...
I'm embarrassed to go though.
Let me finish, please. If the judge rules in your favor, we'll certainly abide by it. I would suggest that maybe if you want to stick around till the end of the meeting, you have a private conversation with our police chief, that may be helpful to you also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney Mike Stiff. Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn Mayor.
We have motion for adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti? Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Vache?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Maura Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:51 PM. I thank you and good evening.